Good evening, everyone. I call this meeting to order. Could we please stand and salute the flag?
Yes. I respect allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Cheers are so damn heavy. Good evening, everyone. Today is September 24th. Today is September the 24th. And even though our school has been open all year round and our staff, our administrators, and some of our personnel people have been working around the clock to get our school up and running, I want to thank everyone for being here today. And I want to recognize our staff who worked for 12 months to make sure that we opened our school properly, we didn't have any major concerns, because if we did, I would have heard something from Sam, and I didn't. Right? And I didn't. So I think that, you know, I want to thank everyone for doing an excellent job to open up our schools. Thank you very much. In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as follows. On January 10, 2024, notice was sent to the home news Tribune star ledger, Union County local source, Tapper Pinter Linden, and the clerk of the municipality. By state law, there is no smoking permitted in this building at any time. In addition to the listed items in this agenda, this Board of Education may discuss and act upon other items not specifically referred to herein, as is allowed at a regularly scheduled monthly board meeting under the sunshine law. Roll call.
Ms. Thomas.
Present.
Ms. Ulysses.
Present.
Ms. Armstead.
Present.
Ms. Carrillo.
Present.
Ms. Centron.
Present.
Mr. Dela Cruz.
Here.
Ms. Pino.
Present.
And Dr. Burghammer.
Present.
At this time, we're going to have comments from the public. No comment from the public? Okay, good.
Good evening. Tanya Martin Cooper, 225 East Curtis Street, Linden, New Jersey, President of Linden Education Association. And I just want to thank everybody for a smooth opening for the school year. The Linden Education Association is looking forward to partnering with the Board of Education through partnerships, through the Public Education Partnership Program with the NJEA. And we're looking forward to positive and productive year. Have a good night.
I was going through the policy guide, and under firearms and weapons, it says, "Any student or school employee who suspects or notices the presence of a firearm or weapon violates this policy and fails to report the same stuff should be subject to discipline." I don't have a problem with that, the way it reads, but what I have a problem with this doesn't take into account that, let's say, a student had the gun. God forbid, I don't want it to happen. But if they have a weapon or a gun, whatever it is, and the students around them know that this student has a weapon of some kind, they may feel intimidated or scared to bring it up to an administrator, teacher, or staff member. So it seems, it's not very, doesn't go into an ideal like that where this, other students that are aware of the weapon, it sounds like they automatically get some kind of discipline without any course to say, hey, look, you know, I felt intimidated. The guy sitting next to me, or the kid sitting next to me, had a weapon, so of course I was scared. You know, I mean, the way this reads, it doesn't take that kind of situation into account.
Mr. Halloran, on Tuesday, on Thursday, we are going to be having a presentation that would be provided by our school security. Now, bear in mind, when it comes to security, school security, we also have to be very careful as to what we could share to the public and what information we could share to the public and what information we cannot share. But I would recommend that you make sure and come to our Thursday board meeting, because we would be having a presentation, I believe, by Ms. Perkins, by the principal of the high school, as well as our security for the entire school district. Right? Because we know that security is important. People cannot learn. So we will be having that presentation on Thursday to the public.
Yeah, I'll be here Thursday.
Again, some of the questions you want to ask, we can give you the answer. It is security. Okay? But you are welcome to meet with a superintendent or even head of security at any time and ask questions that could be answered with limitations.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay?
Yes.
Anyone in line? Okay.
Good evening, Tanya Martin Cooper again. This time, I'm coming up as the math coach of Linden Public Schools, 225 East Curtis Street, again. In the agenda, I am up for going to the test verification for New Jersey Student Learning Assessment. I've been doing this for the last 24 years. I'm an integral part of the mathematics committee. But I also want to just announce, because I was asked to do so by the coordinator of the New Jersey Department of Mathematics Department, and in between September and October of 2024, the recruiting for new mathematics committees, math, language arts, science, math, language arts, and science, I don't think they're doing social studies. And just be on the lookout for that, because members of our community, our teaching staff can apply for it. I am the only one in Union County that is on the committee, but I would like to see other people from Linden. I will not be here forever. I'm, like I said, I've been on the committee for 24 years, and I would love for new people to be involved in the committee, because it's a tremendous amount of work, test verification. I don't know if anybody has ever heard of what test verification is, but the committee actually looks at the tests that go out for testing each year. So in 2025, that will be the last year that we will have the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment as it is. It will be a whole new test, starting 2026. And so we need a new committee. I will be on the committee, because I am a senior member, but I would also like to see other people from Linden apply for various positions. Thank you.
That's a good idea. That's a good... Mrs. Perkins, do you think we could get an ad that run on our billboards, looking for coaches, or looking for tutors, or different stuff, or even on Channel 36, where we could start really promoting "It Takes a Village" by getting people within the community to help contribute their time or their skill to help improve or move our school district forward? What are your thoughts on that?
My thoughts are that we can publicize anything on our billboards that we believe is advantageous to communicate with our community. So the first part was advertising for employment. Yes, we can put up our website information and how to contact for employment. And then you spoke to the other pieces of "It Takes a Village," as well as just enhancing our homeschool connection through the "It Takes a Village." Yes, we definitely, we have nine times where we get to recognize community members, and we definitely would like to increase input from, so we will work on that and share it out with the board of what that can look like, because we would want that to be a unified message on all the boards at all the same time. And then lastly, I will connect with our publicists to connect with the city about Channel 36, to get all of this captured through that platform as well.
Any thoughts? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just want everyone to be on the lookout for the broadcast. This should be September 2024, which is ending this week into October 2024. There's going to be a deadline, and it's internal, so I just want to make sure that it gets out, so they fill out that survey monkey and at least get, because people have asked me, but I have no power. It has to be...
Thank you very much.
I have the power. I do have power. I have the power to spread the message, but then after that, it goes on to people I live with. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next agenda item, our superintendent's report.
Thank you. On Thursday evening, my superintendent's report will include an action review of the opening of schools. We will have security presentations for in-district as well as connected with the Linden Police Department. We will, I'll review back to school night and PTA expectations and joining. We will also have our first meeting from our student representative to the board. She'll be sharing out thoughts and ideas from the Linden High School's student perspective. We will also talk about the upcoming ribbon cuttings for our playgrounds, and also remind everyone of deadlines that are coming up, that we want to make sure that the community is aware of, such as the lunch applications. And that will conclude my report.
Okay. Our next agenda item would be our education committee. I'm going to transfer it over to Vice President to take over. I'm talking tonight, so please.
Sure. Now, moving into the education report. Thank you. The education committee, upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools and the assistant superintendents, on Thursday will present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Items number 1 through 10, on pages 5 through 13, are seeking approval for various special education services. This includes enrollment of students in various out-of-district placements, termination of students in out-of-district placements, one-to-one medical care services, as well as one-to-one power professional services, as well as seeking to approve vendors who will be conducting various bilingual evaluations for some of our ML students as part of their evaluation process. That continues through page 13. Item number 11, on page 13, is seeking to approve district field trips. Copies are in the hands of board members. Item number 12, on page 13 through 14, is seeking to amend past action on previous education reports. Item number 13, on pages 14 through 22, is seeking approval for various use of facilities for activities that are going to be taking place throughout the 24-25 school year. This includes Latin groove dance academy assemblies, Special Olympics programming, Title I programming, CPR training, the high school bonfire and homecoming dance, and various other activities taking place throughout the district. Item number 14, on pages 22 to 32, is seeking to approve PD for staff. Item number 15, on page 33, is seeking approval for the cost of refreshments for family engagement events at our Title I schools. Item number 16 is seeking to approve the weekly, the revised weekly time allotment for the middle school for the 24-25 school year. Items number 17 and 18 is seeking to approve the revised elementary world language curriculum writing. They will be working on vertical alignment, benchmark assessments, and thematic units. Item number 19, on page 35, is seeking to approve the writing of the secondary ESL curriculum, where they will be ensuring that the curriculum is aligned to the new ELD standards, as well as the New Jersey Student Learning Standards for ELA. Item number 20, on page 35, is seeking to approve the staff to participate. It's an ongoing partnership that started last year with Raritan Valley Community College. Item number 21, on page 36, is seeking to approve after-school Title I tutoring at Soul Middle School. Item number 22, on page 37, is seeking to approve the revised elementary weekly time allotment. The change included adjusting the minutes from 40 minutes to 30 minutes for some of the elective classes. Item number 23, 24, and 25 is in preparation for the New Jersey GPA Administration, which is going to be starting on October 8th. So that is seeking to approve the revised dates, as well as the delayed opening for students who are not taking the NJGPA assessment. Item number 25, on page 38, is seeking to approve the tutorial program to assist students with preparing for the NJGPA assessment. Item number 26, which is on pages 38 through 41, is seeking to approve our required behavioral threat assessment teams for each school. Item number 27 and 28 is seeking to approve home instruction services. This is for when some of our students are placed in a hospital or medical facility. We're responsible for fiscally covering their home instruction services. Item number 29 is to continue a partnership with New Jersey 4S, which is a statewide mental health organization, at no cost to the district. Item number 30 is seeking to approve two staff members to conduct their administrative internship under the leadership of Mr. Mastroiano at McManus Middle School. Items number 31 and 32 is seeking to approve Joe Scaldino and Jennifer Smith to serve as the non-public aid contacts. Item number 33 and 34 is seeking to approve the Brothers Break Bread Initiative and the I Am Beautiful Mentoring Program, which are mentoring programs that take place at Linden High School. Item number 35 is seeking to approve two administrators to participate in the Women of Color Education Collaborative, which is a fellowship which will take place throughout the entire 24-25 school year, which includes both virtual PD, in-person PD, ongoing coaching, as well as various support provided throughout the entire school year. Item number 36, on page 43, is proclaiming October as National Bullying Prevention Month. Activities will be taking place throughout the school, throughout the school district. Item number 37 is proclaiming October as Polish American Heritage Month. Item number 38, on page 44, is also proclaiming October as Attendance Awareness Month. We will be embarking on a campaign to increase messaging regarding the benefits of proactive attendance. Item number 39, on page 45, is proclaiming October as National Principals Month. And that concludes the education report.
Any questions?
Yes, I have a question on number 12. Item number 5, why is, why is there such a big difference now from the first time?
When we spoke with the director of the department, they shared that the contract had changed, and as a result, the price had to be adjusted. So the contract was approved prior to the start of the new school year.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
38 just needs to be changed from September to October. I'm sorry. 38 just needs to be changed from September to October. Number 33 to 38. Say that again?
No, I'm just saying, on 38, to change September to October. Sorry, that's actually 4th September. I said October, yes, I misspoke. That's meant to read September. I misspoke.
And on page 30, number 14, 7374, it looks like it's a repeat. If it's for something different, it has the same workshop title. It is. That's a duplicate. Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question, just a comment. Bullying, I would like to know how that's going. After you start the activities and stuff, I would like to see what's going on, how it was taking place, and what's the effect that's happened on the children? And can they relate to what they're trying to explain to them? I would love to see the outcome of that.
Sure. So what we'll do typically throughout the schools, the week of respect, all the schools will do various activities. Sometimes they'll dress up, they'll wear jerseys, they'll wear different articles of clothing, and engage in various activities. There are assemblies that also take place throughout the school, throughout the school district, but we'll share a calendar of all of that for you, and then provide you with updated information regarding HIV reports.
Thank you.
I have a concern, and I do not know if other board members may share the same concerns with me. God rest his soul, but Dr. Tomasic, the year before Dr. Tomasic started as our board president, our test scores were not heading in the right direction. So he took a look at all of our professional development training, and he said, "One of the things I want to do is that I want to keep our teachers in district." So for that year, most of our professional development was done online. That year, our test scores went, we were heading in the right direction. I know that a lot of stuff was done online because of the COVID, so there was a lot of online training that teachers could have tapped into. But now, I think that we're getting back to where we were before the pandemic, and our school has started to regress and not go back and not continue in the direction that Dr. Tomasic, Dr. Tomasic set a foundation where our test scores were improving, everything was moving in the right direction. Now we are starting to slip again. And it concerns me. I am very much into professional development, but my question is, is the professional development that we are in, is it really working? All right? And how, who do we have to measure? What system do we have in place to measure whether or not the system we have in place is working? Or do we have to change some of the, I know some training is state mandated, we can't get away from it, but some is not. But how do we measure whether or not the professional development is working? I think there's only one way to measure it. If you're getting all this professional development, then it's the school, the test scores should be moving in the right direction. Right? What do you think?
I think that if the professional development is based on what we're being tested for, then yes, I do think that we need to look further into that. We were supposed to receive some information on additional virtual professional development trainings that will happen, that are coming up, to see if we can keep some of our professional development within the district. But those are my thoughts on that.
It's not I don't, it's not that I don't believe in professional development. I'm an educator. I'm always learning, because I know the day you stop growing is the day you start dying. So professional development and growth is important, but it's supposed to be working. It's supposed to be moving our district forward. It should not be something we do, because we have to do it. We are doing it for one reason and one reason only, to benefit our students. And if it is not benefiting our students, maybe we need to regroup. And we maybe, we need to look at what we're doing. Insanity is doing the same thing, expecting different results. So maybe we have to regroup and figure out whether what we're doing is working, and maybe make some changes. Mrs. Perkins, what are your thoughts on that?
My first thought is, is that I will be able to provide the board with the data analysis of our test scores and what our district sees as areas for improvement. And through the data analysis that has been conducted thus far, I have not seen a correlation that it is connected to professional development. Professional development is what it says it's for. It's to help develop the pedagogy and understanding of the responsibilities that every, any staff member who's going to some form of professional development. We do have a criteria to sign up for professional development. We do expect staff to provide a write-up in regards to how the professional learning impacts their roles and responsibilities. And a larger piece of it is that it's been turnkeyed back into the district, so it is provided to more than that one person. So yes, do I agree that our test scores, in which I'll be reporting out, because the student individual scores have to be mailed home first, so I'm not sharing too much more now publicly, but overall, we do have interventions put in place to help grow, grow those scores. And I do understand the virtual learning is always a great option when it's available, and that's what we do expect our staff to carry out with. But a lot of professional learning experiences, we just had a discussion with, with teachers and members of the high schools, speaking on some professional development has to be in person because of the hands-on experience and what they're going through. So we are looking at that. And I just want to make sure that I am providing you and the board with, we, we promote professional development, because that's, that's what we, we have to as educators, but we also make sure that there is clear expectations for why people are going to professional development. It's... Sorry. It's a, it's a, okay. It's a rich experience. It's a rich experience, and, and we can provide the data to show that.
Okay. In response, I believe that professional development should be tied to outcome. All professional development, it is not, it is, of course, it is intended to make our educators and our staff, because everybody, professional development is not only for staff. Professional development should be for securities people. It should be for custodians. It should be for people who even work in the kitchen, because everybody should get better. Everybody should learn and grow. But when it comes to our teachers, the priority for professional and development should, should translate into better student outcome. Yes, I agree. Come on, Miss Education Lady, what do you have to say in that?
I'm all for education, absolutely. Professional development is very important, but we cannot take advantage of it. We want each and every teacher, administration, to get an opportunity to do it. Okay? But we have to figure out a way that they can do it, which is, is very costly. It's very costly. But why not pay for what we want, get what we need? But if it's not benefiting us, why are we doing it? Everybody has the opportunity to take a chance on doing it. So let's let every teacher, every administration, everyone take the time to get it, and we take it from there. Okay?
You're right. I think, I think that parents and students should have a part to play in the type of professional development teachers get. Because the parents and the students and the parent know what they want. The parents know how the students learn. And the students know what they need to learn. So I think when you're even doing professional development, it shouldn't just be a bunch of administrators picking programs. It's supposed to involve some students, as well as some parents. I think that is one way we could possibly bridge the gap, and start getting the outcomes that we're looking for. When we're doing professional development right now, do we ask for student input? Do we ask for parent input? Or is this just administrators right now that sit down and supervisors, that sit down and determine how we pick programs and classes?
Well, there's several components for stakeholder input. It's also teachers, it's based off of national standards, it's based off of current research that helps to enhance best practices for, for educators. As you stated, no, it's not just teachers, it's for anyone that has a, who's in the education system. But specifically for teachers, yes, there are specific, it's aligned to the subject they're teaching. Science teachers may be going to professional learning to enhance what's going on in the curriculum, to know what trends are. It may be language arts, looking at how to help students with the support. So are we asking students? No, I don't believe that, that will be advantageous because it's, it's based off of, like I said, national standards, and core common, I mean, core, I'm sorry, the New Jersey Learning Standards, that says what students are supposed to know in each grade level. That drives our daily instruction, that drives how we carry out the curriculum. And then the professional development then captures additional ways how to support carrying out the, the teaching and learning.
You're absolutely right, I would, this is my last thing, and we move on. In essence, the national standards are not working. We all know that. Because we are struggling all around the country. So if we are focusing on national standards, we are not going to get, or students is not going to get, what they need to get. So all I'm saying, again, I believe in professional development. I believe that our teachers should learn and they should grow. But I think the way we put our professional development plan in place is not working. We really need to get input from parent, to do surveys on parents to find out what they think the children need in order to improve. We need to hear from students. The students need to tell us what they need in order to improve. And based on, and also, we could add national standards and all of that. But we have to take a global approach, global and local approach, in towards helping our school district move in the direction. Because what we're doing right now is insane. We have to change what we're doing, and try something new.
We can get a survey for parents and students, and provide that input. So we'll, we'll put that together.
You're sorry for your teddy.
Sure, at this time, we're going to move on to the finance report.
Good evening. On Thursday, the Finance Committee, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and myself, will be presenting the following motions to the Linden Board of Education. Resolutions 1 through 5 are our typical monthly resolutions, approving the Board Secretary and Treasurers Report, approving the payroll, approving the payment of bills, approving transfers, and approving the Student Activities Report. Resolution 6 is looking for amendment on past agenda items. The first one is amending the amount to 19,751 instead of 15,851. This is for the installation of the storage sheds by the field. The amount of 15,851 did not include the installation cost, so that's why the cost was somewhat higher. The second resolution is changing an account code. And the third resolution, and we're happy to report, we did receive more money for our Special Olympics grant. We initially had approved for $1,000. It is $13,000, so I want to thank Mike Firestone for his work on that. Resolution 7 is approving accepting funds from the Blackboard Giving Fund for the School 6 PTA. Resolution 8, I know the school year just started, but we're already looking at 25, 26, because we have to start, at least initially, start the budget creation work. So we are looking for approval of the budget creation calendar. Resolution 9 is approving a contract with Management and Evaluation Associates for the 21st Century Learning Grant, for $14,000 for the 24, 25 school year. Resolution 10, we are looking to renovate the graphic design room at the last building, with purchasing stools, workstations, pedestals, standing teachers' desks and drawers, at a cost of $28,386.55 through EdData. Resolution 11 is looking to purchase a new surveillance server. The one that we currently have is come to the end of its life. We're looking to purchase that through Maffey Security Group. Resolution 12, this is for OmniAlert Weapons Detection AI. This is for actually, and I think I sent this out to the Board of Education, an article as well as a video that showed how the system worked. But it's, it's AI on our 212 cameras that would be able to detect weapons that would appear on the cameras at our high school. Resolution 13 is for proposals from Fox Fence for purchasing, based on the recommendations of our security and police department, as well as our maintenance department. We're looking at installing fencing at the McManus Middle School, school number 6, and the Soul Middle School, per the recommendation of Security and Police Department. At school number 1, we have a new gas meter by the, I don't want to say front entrance, but it's on the side over here. And we wanted to enclose that, so that this, that it could not be tampered with. Resolution 14 is looking to approve Maffey Security Group for the district's central station monitoring and cell backup, testing for district alarms for the 24, 25 school year. Resolution 15 is having Millennium Communications Group basically on standby for emergency fiber restoration and maintenance for the 24, 25 school year. Resolution 16 is to approve a non-resident staff, staff members, non-resident child ward to be enrolled in the Linden High School for the 24, 25 school year, with a tuition that we would be collecting from them. Resolution 17 is the standard operating procedures manual. I had emailed a copy of that to the Board of Education. Resolution 18 is looking to continue with GoFan for our digital ticket sales for the 2024, 25 school year, for events that we're having at the school. Resolution 19, on September 12th, we had a bid opening for the cafeteria HVAC at school number 4, and EnviroCon was the lowest of the three bids received. Resolutions 20, 21, 22, and 23 are for non-public funding. We are receiving, we as the district will receive funds for the Sinai Christian Academy and the Mazdav Bobov Linden Schools for their technology, as well as for their security. There's actually a meeting today with them in regards to this funding. The way that I could best describe it is, we would act as the business office for those two schools. You know, the, the non-public schools tend to not know the purchasing laws, the ones, you know, that we are unfortunately, or fortunately, I guess, whichever way you want to describe it, are subject to, you know, the, the money that is coming in. You know, they, it's not that they can be spent on everything, you know. So as the business office, we review all of the purchasing that they're anticipating for the 24, 25 school year, to ensure that it complies with the regulations. Resolutions 24 and 25 are seeking approval to submit the 2023, 24 final expenditure reports for ESSA, as well as for IDEA. ESSA is our Title I, Title II, Title III, and Title IV funding. And IDEA is special education funding. Both of those are from the federal government. Resolution 26 is looking to discard of surplus equipment, old butcher block tables, iPad carts, iPad stands, and a projector. Resolution 27 is looking for approval for the trailers that we currently have at school number 6 High School. Resolution 28 is approving alternate method of compliance for toilet room facilities for kindergarten classrooms at school number 5 and school number 10. Those classrooms don't currently have bathrooms in them. So we need to basically seek approval that we have an alternative method for the students to go to the bathroom. Resolution 29 is approving attendance at the New Jersey School Board's Workshop in Atlantic City for the Board of Education, as well as members of the administrative team. Resolution 30 is looking for approval of dual use for several classrooms throughout the district. And what this means is, is that we are splitting classrooms in half for small group instructions on both sides. Resolution 31 is looking to join the Hunterton County Educational Service Commission Purchasing Co-op. Resolution 32 is approving Maffey's to handle the district's locksmith services and locking hardware for 24, 25. Resolution 33 is approving the replacement of faces on the double-sided marquee at the high school, the electronic marquee. Resolution 34 is approving the proposal from CDW to perform the migration and configuration of the district's firewall. And two new resolutions that came on after our committee meetings. Resolution 35 is approving the proposal from Methusic to perform the repairs and sanding to the Linden High School gymnasium as a result of the damage from flooding. The total cost on that is $78,806. We are receiving money from the insurance to cover those costs. We're receiving about $58,000, so total cost to the district is $20,000, which represents the cost of the depreciation of the old floor, as well as our $10,000 deductible. And Resolution 36 is looking to approve the business office to put out an RFP for energy procurement services. The district currently just renews with PSENG for its energy services. This would basically have, I want to say like an agent to go out there to see if we can get better pricing for our energy. So that's it in regards to the resolutions. I just wanted to give the board an update that the construction, you know, even though we're into the school year, the construction still continues. The playgrounds are actually, School 8, the equipment has been put in at School 8, and they are now moving on to School 9 for the equipment. They will be working on, the way that they work is they put the equipment in first for the playgrounds, and then they put down the foam flooring. So they're going to be starting on that at School 8 soon. And that's it, I have in regards to my report.
Are there any, thank you. Are there any questions or concerns?
Yes. Number 27. Are you looking to put classrooms back in those trailers?
At the high school, I don't believe there are. Actually, I believe there is one. There's an office there, there is
Cycling?
Was that the cycling room? Yeah, it's the, there's a cycling room. I know that there was discussions about what the second trailer would be. Because there's four, there's two trailers over there that have four classrooms. One is utilized for ISS, right?
Yes.
And then, at the School 6, I believe they do have one classroom out there during the course of the day.
Well, there was discussion, I believe, that we approved in the past, and I think Malaysia was part of this one, about not having classrooms in those trailers, especially due to the modern-day issues that we're having with weapons. That that one terrorist guy was here on Linden, and it was very close to School 6. And it was what, what my challenge was, is that school in those trailers, and you had a lockdown. Those trailers are not safe. Because if they have a weapon, if they have a rifle, they can shoot through it, lockdown shelter in place, they're going to get somebody, God forbid that happens. We removed the classrooms from those trailers to go inside. We approved to get a, an estimate on building new classrooms and attaching, tearing those trailers down and attaching them to the building. And I believe everything has stalled at School number 6 with something that was approved in the past. I want to know why has it been stalled when we approved it? And we're using these trailers again as temporary. Temporary, these were temporary 20 years ago, and we still have them there. And we're not moving forward. I disagree with this one, if they're putting classrooms back in these trailers due to the safety of our children and staff.
And do we know what grade is being taught in the trailer at School 6?
I don't believe it's a grade, I believe it's gifted and talented.
Thank you.
And, and we did speak with, you know, we, we are, I mean, it's going to, I guess that kind of builds into an overall discussion on construction throughout the district. Because the installation of the classrooms in there would be a significant investment by the district, not saying that it's not needed. But there's been, you know, we've also talked about the possibility of construction elsewhere throughout the district. So I would, I would just need to get clarification, you know, really from the board as to what we wanted to do. Even if we were going to install the classrooms there, I believe it would take a little bit of time. You know, we've certainly spoken with the principal in regards to that. I, I just think that it's becoming a space issue, that I don't believe they're able to get, you know, because I, I, you know, I think there's one, one of them is just an office, correct? Or it's not really? But, you know, I basically told them, I was like, I want to, if we could, get rid of the trailers. But I, I think the issue is, is that they're, they're, they don't have the space. But we could, we'll certainly talk with them again about it.
Well, we know about the space throughout the district. And plus, our district overall is growing. Linden is growing, there's buildings coming up everywhere. And we've been speaking about this for the past three years, if I'm correct, how we're growing, and yet, our schools, we're still not doing any improvement to make them grow, because we're going to need more classrooms. Obviously, we're needing more classrooms, we need more space. And we're not looking into the future. It looks like we're staying stalled where we're at. And we cannot, we got to move forward with the city. The city is growing, we got to grow. And if we're not growing, and we keep these trailers there temporarily, I see another 20 years down the line, being temporary. That's not, that's not a good Band-Aid for us. We got to move forward. We got to start thinking outside the box on how we're going to grow, and take these families that are coming in, and have room for the kids moving forward.
Well, we have, we did award an RFP for Realtor Services, and we've instructed the Realtor to start looking for spaces that could accommodate, you know, and I've kind of instructed her to look at warehouses-type areas so that we can have the possibility of renovating it for additional classroom space. Because I, you know, the construction, the problem with it is, it's very costly, and it takes a lot of time to, you know, go from beginning to end, from drawings and the approvals from the state. But like I said, we're, we're open to everything and anything that you guys want to do.
I think we should continue that conversation in the back.
I agree.
Are there any other? Are there any other questions on the finance report?
Hello, comment. 71. I'm so pleased with the Special Olympics. Thank you, whoever got that much money. Thank you very much, which we couldn't get that much before. Thank you very much. So it's going to be the same people dealing with the Special Olympics? Yes, the coach?
Same teachers?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
John, I need to ask two questions on 24 and 25.
Yes.
Regarding the grants, the final report for the grants for special education, the IDEA grant and ESEA grant. Are those grants expiring or?
No. What happens is, at the end of the grant period, you submit what's called the final expenditure report to discuss how the money was spent, what, you know, really what you spent the money on. At that point, if there's any money left in the grant, you, it can carry over into the next school year, which would be the 24-25 school year. For us, for our purposes, you know, IDEA, we're utilizing it for, out of district tuition costs, because that's the most efficient way of spending the money. We're utilizing it to decrease the cost there. So we typically do spend down the IDEA money, and we don't usually, and we never have, we haven't had it the last two years, any carryover, and we've spent it all down.
So are we expecting to get more when we renew the grants, or is it going to be the same amount?
The grant actually renewed in July. We, we've already submitted that. It's just because of the timing of it, and I think, you know, during COVID, they extended the grant period to...
The date for two, I think it was two years or so, they...
Well, they extended, but they also extended the time period, because they used to line it up from June, July 1st to June 30th, so it kind of corresponded with our fiscal year. And then during COVID, they, they kind of gave you more time, but they also extended it out a couple of months. But the final expenditure report is basically just discussing what we already spent. It's, it's, we've already done the application for 24-25. We've received that funded, or rather, we haven't received the funding in, we've received approval on the spending that we have planned.
And item number 20. Is there, is there missing, 29? Is there something missing in the second, the last line? Will exceed five or will not, or is there something?
Oh, it should say not, yes. Oof, thank you for that, because otherwise, we'd have to go down and start going crazy with the money. It should say not.
Yeah, okay.
Do you have any more questions?
Just a question on 28. You stated that those classrooms did not have bathrooms?
Yes.
Are there any other classrooms in the district that don't have bathrooms? I didn't know that.
No. Well, there's, not kindergarten ones, not the ones that are required to have it, but we did, you know, we do this survey every summer based off of, you know, enrollment, where they're expecting to put the classrooms, especially the kindergarten ones, but if there were any other ones, we would add them here.
Okay, thank you.
That's it?
One more, one more. On 20 through 23, can you go a little deeper onto what type of agreement is, is this that we're doing with these outside, is it schools or?
Yeah, it's, they're non-public schools, so, and you haven't had this the last couple of years. You know, I think last year was the first time that these schools started to either get enrollment or submit documentation down to the state to receive, to receive this, this money. So we received notification over the summer that Sinai Christian Academy as well as Mazdav Bobov received, or is expected to receive money for technology and security. And non-public schools don't operate the same way that public schools do, I mean, obviously by the name, but also in regards to the way that they're operating. You know, I, I had a colleague that was at a BA at a non-public school, and he would tell me that, he was like, oh, well, how do you deal with the principals and their credit cards and keeping them from spending so much? And I was like, we don't give our principals credit cards. I mean, I'm sure they would all love to have them, but I say, no, we, we have rules and regulations in place. We need to get all of these approvals prior to even a purchase order going out. And I said, so the non-publics typically don't have, you know, they don't have those structures in place. So really, what the agreement is speaking about is that we are going to, you know, there was actually a meeting this afternoon between, really the non-public team and these schools, and it was basically describing, you know, the allowable expenditures for, for these particular programs, you know, what it is that you're allowed to buy for technology, what you're allowed to purchase for security. It also spoke to, you know, the fact of what the process would be. You know, they were asking, you know, do we buy the stuff and submit for reimbursement? We said, no, you know, we're going to be operating as your business office. You're going to be submitting, just like we do with our schools, you submit the proposals to us, and we'll put in the purchase orders for you guys and have the items shipped to you. You sign off that, you've received them, send them back to us, and we'll, we'll issue, you know, we'll, we'll process payment for it. So that's really what the agreement is, is just kind of memorializing that, that there was, that there is this meeting that occurred, because it's one of those regulations that's baked into the non-public agree, or rather, the non-public funding, that we do have these meetings, that we do memorialize, that there is an agreement in place for basically how things are going to work, that, you know, we're going to operate as a business office, we're going to review their purchasing to ensure that it complies with the grant, we'll issue the purchase orders, you know, we receive the money from the state for them, and we're the ones who are going to be cutting the checks.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Billions, Grounds, and Security.
So again, on Thursday night, the Building, Grounds, and Security Committee, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the BA, will be presenting the following motions for approval. Resolution 1 speaks to the PTA Scholastic Book Fair that's being held at Soul Middle School. Resolution 2 is, school number nine is having its delicious ice cream truck on October 4th, and take a picture with a Volani Halloween bus on October 25th. Resolution 3 has school number four having a family zumba night in Hispanic Heritage Month in its cafeteria. Resolution 4 is requesting that the Daisy Girl Scout troop have its Daisy troop meetings at school number nine. Resolution 5 has a triple-threat foundation requesting use of school number four gymnasium for its basketball practice and mentoring program. Resolution 6 has team family elite basketball requesting use of school number six gymnasium for its basketball practice. Resolution 7 has Bowler's Den Foot School Team requesting use of schools five and six gymnasium for its soccer practice. Resolution 8 has the Linden High School PTA requesting use of the Learning Commons for the high school for its PTA meetings. Resolution 9 is looking to approve the Soul Middle School PTA to have a flea market at the faculty parking lots and gymnasium on November 23rd and December 14th. And finally, Resolution 10 is actually us requesting use of the City of Linden Alcala Park for our before and after care program, Mondays through Friday through the 24-25 school year.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments regarding the Buildings, Grounds, and Security? All right, moving on to planning and policy.
The Planning and Policy Committee, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, presents the following motion to the Linden Board of Education for approval. The first reading for policy guide and title, Policy 2200, Program Curriculum Content. This policy is being revised because it removes a list of referencing New Jersey student learning standards. The standards do not need to be included in the policy because the standards are continually changing, and it is appropriate to remove the reference of the New Jersey learning standards. Policy 3160, Teaching Staff Members Physical Education. This policy is being revised because the New Jersey Department of Health indicated that there needs to be updates with the limits for TB screening in New Jersey schools for teachers and other employees, and any students who are considered a high risk for a TB infection. So within this revision, the Board of Education will follow the current New Jersey Department of Health guidelines for tuberculosis, TB testing in New Jersey schools. Policy 5337, Student Service Animals. This policy is being revised because Title II of the Americans with Disability Act states that schools must require students with disabilities to be permitted to have a service animal with them. So this policy also includes the words permitted access for service animals. Policy 7231, Property Gifts from Vendors is being abolished, and that means that it doesn't apply to us for the Linden Public Schools district. It was for Abbott School districts, and that's why it's being abolished. Policy 8467, Operation Firearms and Weapons, also ties to the Regulation Guide towards the bottom for 8467, Operation Firearms and Weapons. This policy is being revised because the title of the policy needs to include the words firearms and weapons. Currently, the policy just states weapons, and so now it's being updated, will revise to align to statute and administrative code for including the word firearms and weapons. And also, I'd like to just add, within this policy, as it was questioned earlier, all of our students are provided with opportunities to share out their concerns. We have a thorough process when we believe that there is a weapon involved in our school system. We also have remediation that ties to it if a weapon is found in the building. You'll hear from security on Thursday again how we enhance our, our programming and our students' safety and security, as Dr. Burghammer stated. So Policy 9181, Community Volunteer Athletic Coaches and Co-Curricula. This policy is also being revised as it was updated for the New Jersey Department of Health, and again, it's with the guidance for TB testing, which states that there needs to be justification for the limited TB screening in New Jersey schools to teachers and other employees. And it also now includes that volunteers will be screened for tuberculosis in accordance with the New Jersey Department of Health guidelines. And the Regulation Guide, Policy 5, I mean, Regulation 5200 for Student Attendance. This policy is being revised because it is to include the provision for where it says state-excused absences for attendance at a civic event. A civic event is now being expanded upon for such an absence, and that may include if a student is going on a college visit or involved in a civic event. The policy now includes that students can be, receive an absence, and our district is indicating the number of days for when, how many days of students can be absent. And that concludes the first reading of the following policies I shared.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments?
I do have a question, actually. For the students with service animals, if we do have any students with service animals, are we gonna, eventually, we will have to provide a relief area for these service animals? Okay, do we currently have any students?
No, we do not.
Okay, so, just wanted to know, so if that does come about, then we have to, okay, thank you.
If it came about, it would be discussed in the Students' IEP meeting, and then the provisions would need to be made to accommodate that.
Copy that, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. At this time, we're going to move on to comments from the public. Members of the public desiring to speak, I mean, excuse me, members from the public desiring to make a public comment may come forward at this time. For those watching online, if you wish to make a comment or ask a question, please utilize the raise-your-hand feature on the online meeting platform. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address. Individuals are invited to speak on one topic at a time, and no individual will speak more than once until all individuals so desiring have spoken once. The public is reminded that to ensure the efficient and orderly operations of the meeting, members of the public will be limited to speaking on items for three minutes.
Craig Haller in 120 Donaldson Place. Dr. Burghammer brought up an interesting idea of how do we improve our development courses or whatever that the staff goes to. But one of the things I learned as a supervisor where I worked was that the best way to evaluate how I did my job was to ask the people that I supervised. In this case, what I'm saying is, why don't we do like an exit interview for kids exiting the elementary schools, the middle schools, and the high schools? Hey, what did you think of the education you received? How do you prove it, and what were the drawbacks? That may be an idea that might be very useful, but you can't, you know, you can't turn around and say, well, this is part of a test. It should be a voluntary thing, and it should be, you know, at the higher end of the grades coming out of the school. That would be the most productive way to do something like this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone online?
No.
Okay. At this time, we're going to make a motion to go into executive. Can someone make a motion and ask for a second, please?
I make a motion to go into executive session.
Second. Roll call.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Yulise?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Corillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Ms. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer.
Dr. Burghammer?
Yes, oh, yes.
Do you have any more questions? Do you have any more questions? All right, like to make a motion to close out tonight's session? Ask for a second?
Second.
Second. Roll call.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Yulise?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Corillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Ms. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer.
Yes.
Thank you.